Meeting the Township Board to order, would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, or my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Ms. Meltzer.
Thank you. Trustee Metuzak?
Here.
Trustee Keys?
Here.
Trustee Patton?
Here.
Supervisor Cannon?
Here.
Trustee Cress?
Present.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Here.
Clerk Meltzer, here.
Thank you. An approval of the agenda is next. Are there any additions or deletions? I have three deletions, Items 2, 3, and 4.
Well, no, no, they have, well, they haven't, well, 3 was deleted, 2 and 4, I just think we have to talk about that. I don't think I can just delete them without the board understanding why.
That's fine.
We can just talk about that. So just the Item 3, and then there are 2 add-ons, Items 16 and 17.
Are there any other additions or deletions?
Mr. Cannon, if I may?
Mr. Cannon?
We need a second for the agenda.
I don't think we, did someone make a motion?
She made a motion.
So...
We need a second.
No, my motion, I didn't make a motion.
No, Timmy made the motion, we just need a second.
A second.
A second, okay.
Okay, but now is that with the deletion of those items?
It's with deleted Item 3 and add-on 16 and 17.
Add-on 16 and 17, okay. And in the staff meeting, there was discussion that the Item Number 13 amendment, or not 13, excuse me, Item Number 15, Request Approval to Rescind the Chipping Service Discontinuation Plan, was board-directed to go to the Budget, Ways, and Means Committee, and it has not gone to the Budget, Ways, and Means Committee. It is back on the agenda. So I would like to move that we send that item to Budget, Ways, and Means. Is that a motion?
So that would be a friendly amendment to the motion, which was to approve the motion is...
Sir, this is for the board, this isn't for the public.
It's an item.
No, it's not an item. It's setting the agenda.
Yeah, so we made a motion to accept the agenda as presented, was, motion was made and seconded, and now you're making a friendly amendment to that stating that Item 15 needs to go to Budget, Ways, and Means.
If it's accepted as friendly, I'm making that motion.
Is there a second?
No.
That's what I'm confused about.
You would ask the mo, I'll, I'll...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Mr. Keys.
I believe we'd want to ask the motion maker in the second if they're okay with the friendly amendment.
So we would vote on that first.
Correct.
Yeah.
The amendment first and then the main motion.
Roll call, please.
I would just like clarification.
I'm lost.
What are we voting on?
The removal of Item 15 from the board agenda, sending it to the Ways and Means agenda.
Taking chipper off today.
Got it.
Who made the motion?
You made the motion, wait, oh, he made the second, yeah, right, that motion, and then who second, Mike Key second.
Well, no, I made the motion for the agenda, I didn't make the motion to rescind.
No, no, that's what I said.
You brought up a friendly amendment, Clerk Meltzer, and so...
No, I just said if you want to make a friendly amendment, that's what it would be.
Right.
So he's made it, you seconded it, is my understanding.
No, I haven't seconded anything. I'm willing to second the motion to amend the agenda if needed, yes.
Okay.
So that needs a second.
Is that your second?
Second.
Just say, say the word.
Again, for the public, this is a township board meeting that's held in the public, it's not a public hearing. The public is allowed to speak as each item comes before the board, but this, we're setting the agenda for the board. So we now can vote on this item Mr. Gilliam brought before the board. Yes, sir.
Can I comment on his friendly amendment?
It's not a friendly one.
We need a second, please.
We did, Mr. Key seconded.
Mike said he would second, but he hasn't yet.
Thank you. I didn't even hear him say it. I heard her tell him to say it, but I didn't hear you say it. So did you second it, Mr. Key?
I have seconded.
Thank you.
Treasurer Gilliam's motion to amend.
Yes, sir.
You're talking about sending it to Budget, Ways, and Means, correct?
It's already been sent there.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just making the comment and letting the public know that all four members of the Budget, Ways, and Means Committee are sitting here right now, and we could respectfully debate any shortcomings they see in my motion, rather than go behind closed doors on a Tuesday or Thursday, and that's, that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. You're welcome, you're welcome to go outside and share all you want. This is not a football stadium.
Is this directed at me?
This is directed at two of you. That's, no, two of you.
Okay.
Otherwise, we can't have, we can't conduct a meeting. We can't conduct a meeting in public if we're going to do that. Mrs. Meltzer, we have a motion on the floor, Mr. Gilliam, supported by Mr. Keys. Roll call, please.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
No.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
No.
Clerk Meltzer, no. Motion passes.
Thank you. Now we have a motion on the floor to accept the rest of the agenda, except for Item 3 and the addition of 16 and 17. Roll call, please.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Thank you. If anyone has any public comments, we have cards on the front. You will be allowed at the end of the meeting to say anything you want for three minutes. Thank you. With that, we'll go with Item Number 1, the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item 2, Introduction of Applicant for the Historical Commission.
Mr. Cannon, I have, I did look over the application, and I cannot find the applicant's address to confirm residency, nor is there a phone number that I could, it was to a business, so can we table this until the next meeting?
I have no problem with that. Is the applicant here?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Item 3 has been deleted. Item 4, Introduction of Applicant for the Conservation Committee.
Mr. Cannon, again, I am, I did look up the address for this applicant, and they do live in Fairhaven. My understanding is this, the applicant's, I just need confirmation, do they need to live in Clinton Township?
We, I can just say, yeah, we did have that in the most recent version of the, we don't necessarily have bylaws, but you're right, it's the most recent version of the rules for the committee.
So they've got a living Clinton.
It's just, you know, a vote by this board that could change that if we wanted to. I don't mean to say it's, you know, state law or anything like that.
So I would make a motion to delete this request, and then if they want to reapply after the committee meets and makes a decision.
That would be fine. Is there a second?
A second. Support.
Roll call, please.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And one of the heroes of our community, next on the agenda, is Request Approval for the FAN, or Families Against Narcotics, to place signs around the township for their annual 5K walk and run. And Judge, we, you've done it in the past, the only thing that we ask is you keep it back off the sidewalks.
Right.
And that, I think that was the number one thing that we were worried about.
Yeah, we always put them behind the power pole.
Yeah.
And then we get permission from every landowner that we put them with, and we're very diligent about that, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
And we're all very pleased about that nice big sign on Garfield.
Good, I'm glad.
I make a motion for approval.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you, Julie. Roll call, please. Anything else, Judge?
No, I just wanted to announce to the board, I don't think everybody except you knows that, that we just opened new offices on 19 Mile and Garfield.
Beautiful.
And we are doing a name change, and if you look at the sign, it says Face Addiction Now. We really wanted it to be a more positive message in the community and really represent what we're doing. We're working with a lot of hospitals now, and the Against Narcotics really flew in the face of what they do for a living, and so we really, when we started, we were only serving families, and we serve so many more people now, and we help people, families and people suffering from addiction, Face Addiction Now, so that name still has the acronym FAN, but will be a change, so when you see the sign, it will say the new name on it.
Thank you.
Mr. Cannon, just quickly, if I could ask, knowing that you're going through that transition, maybe not a rebranding, but, you know, a refocus, I know one of the things that really was highlighted to me during the events that I would go to are those banners that were all throughout the tents showing us how many people were impacted in our own community. Is that still planned to be a focus? Would that be highlighted in a different way?
Yeah, no, we still have teams that are there representing loved ones that have been lost and those that are struggling to find their way to recovery, and then also celebrating those that have found their way to recovery. That will always be a part of everything FAN does. Obviously, we do fundraising, but our first and foremost consideration is educating the public and bringing awareness to what a huge problem this is.
Well, you know, I grew up right behind Clintdale High School. My parents sent me to Fraser High School. I always tell the Clintdale alumni not to hold that against me. But going to Fraser, there was a real message that was around narcotics and the abuse and drug addiction. And I think, of course, it happens in the other school districts, but again, maybe it was just my exposure, but Fraser High School, it was an intense message. It was, it was so close to home. And I think that the other schools have adapted, or adopted that, and I see that you're in these other schools as well. But I just, it had a real impact on me, my, my junior and senior year at Fraser.
Right, just to show you the magnitude of, and this isn't the problem growing, it's just the awareness of it. But last year, we have a call center where you can call and ask for help. Last year at this time, we were fielding about 800 calls. We are close to 5,000 calls a month right now, and those are all people seeking our services. So it's huge, and a large portion of those people live right here in Clinton Township.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Thank you so much for your continued support, I appreciate it, and hopefully we'll see you all at our grand opening.
Thank you. Mr. Cannon, I have a request. There was Madison Lawrence was, she's attending remotely, and I didn't see her request to speak. Would you like her to speak at this time, or do you want to wait till the end of the meeting? She was the candidate that was run for the history, or for the Conservation Committee, that we deleted the item.
She would have three minutes to speak now, which is fine.
Which, at the end of the...
No, she can do it right now.
Okay. All right, Madison.
We kind of skipped by it real quick.
Yeah, Madison, go ahead, you, we can hear you at the, your microphone is active.
You can hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, talk a little louder if you can.
Okay, so it probably said Fairhaven because I recently just moved a little over six months ago to Clinton Township. So, but I know that I did put my current address in the application, but I really am looking forward to hopefully being a part of the Conservation Committee because I do have a very strong background and passion for sustainability, which kind of goes with this committee. I currently have worked in sustainability the past year, and I have really been able to really champion a lot of our practices and events and what we want to put together. I put together a clothing drive, I put together cleanups, I put in together potlucks, just to help promote different ways to help send the message across on how we can conserve our natural resources. And this is kind of what I want to do going forward in my career, and because I also recently moved recently to Clinton Township, I thought this would be a great way for me to get involved and meet new people that are very like-minded, and I figured that this committee would kind of suit that well, so I just wanted to get, get a chance to speak and, and just for you to get to know more about me so that I could be a part of that, that committee, hopefully. Thank you so much.
She's, she's done, thank you. Were you all able to hear her?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, well, we as a board were able to hear her. So she has moved to Clinton Township, she said, but she didn't change her address, and I'm looking at the application. Madison, for some reason, maybe the, it didn't go through for whatever reason.
Okay.
When I looked you up in the Qualified Voter File, you are registered in Fairhaven, so that's why we made the motion, and I apologize, we didn't get to see you ahead of time, but this still can be an introduction, and we could approve it at the next meeting.
Two weeks.
In two weeks.
Okay, sounds good.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And if I could just, as the Chair of the Conservation Committee, invite you, please, to come to our next meeting, which is May 9th. That's Thursday, May 9th. I'll get the email off of her application and make sure that we send you out a link. But really, what we're encouraging members of the committee to do this month is, on May 4th, and I'm forgetting the time, maybe Ms. Bednar will remember, but the Arboretum Committee has organized an event at the Arboretum. And so we're going to be encouraging our members to go on out on Saturday, May 4th. I believe it's both a cleanup and a planting, but I don't know exactly the time. No.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll send that out, but certainly encourage you to attend the May 9th meeting. I'll send you out the information as well as the info for the May 4th cleanup.
Okay, and we allowed her to come on because we bypassed her item thinking that she wasn't here.
Yes.
That she didn't live in the community, but that's not the case, so we will address and fix that in two weeks. So with it, we'll go to Item 6, Request Approval to Award Shook Road Janitorial Maintenance 2024 Program.
Dear members of the board, attached you will find a bid tabulation for janitorial services needed at the Water Department Shook Road Maintenance Facility for a duration of approximately three years. After checking references, the requested motion is to award the Shook Road Facility Janitorial Maintenance Contract, the low bidder, Universal Contracting Services LLC, for pricing submitted on their March 26, 2024 bid form. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to ask. Sincerely, Charles Belmore, Assistant Superintendent of Water and Sewer.
Comments or questions of the board members?
I...
Yes.
Who currently does the cleaning there?
Mary.
We currently have a different company. Honestly, I don't know off the top of my head who that company is, but we have contracted the service out for numerous years because we do not have custodian, like here at the Civic Center, at the Civic, at the Senior Center, we have custodians that work the facility at Shook Road, we do not have it. And being that it is a contract, you know, or a area with a heavy outdoor use and so forth, we do need to have that area serviced.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't privatizing work that some folks in the township were already doing.
No, this has always been a contract out, and every three years, we rebid it.
I make a motion for approval.
Support.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
No.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Item 7, Request Approval to Award Water Valve Assessment and Testing Program.
Dear members of the board, attached you will find a competitive bid for a water valve assessment and testing program for the Clinton Township Water Distribution Network. The valve assessment and testing program will provide vital asset information for future planning and fiscal needs. Testing and assessing all water valves on a five-year basis is essential for good water system operation. In accordance with township purchasing and bid policies, we advertise this program on the Michigan Intergovernmental Trade Network and are recommending awarding the project to low bidder Xylem Dewatering Solutions, Inc., and doing business as Wox Water Services. This vendor successfully performed this service for Clinton Township in 2019. This is a budgeted purchase, and our recommendation motion is to approve awarding the project to the lowest bidder, Xylem Dewatering Solutions, Inc., doing business as Wox Water Service, for the pricing contained in their March 2020, I'm sorry, March 26, 2024 bid. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to ask. Sincerely, Charles Belmore, Assistant Superintendent of Water and Sewer.
I make a motion for approval.
Sir, support?
Support.
Comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Item 8, Request Approval to Purchase a Replacement Escavator.
Dear members of the board, oh, wait, this is, yeah, the compact excavator, are you saying, Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Okay. Dear members of the board, attached you will find a quote for a compact excavator for the Water Department. We have contacted the vendor, and they have agreed to honor the pricing offered through the Source Well Government Purchasing Program as solicited for a Bobcat compact excavator with trailer. In accordance with township purchasing and bid policies, the recommended motion is to award the purchase to Clark Equipment Company, doing business as Bobcat Company, through Bobcat of Motor City East for $88,839.86 for a Bobcat compact excavator with trailer. This is a budgeted position, budgeted purchase, sorry. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to ask. Sincerely, Charles Belmore, Assistant Superintendent of Water and Sewer.
I make a motion for approval.
This is a budgeted item, obviously. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 9, Request Approval to Purchase Three Replacement Water Department Vehicles.
Dear members of the board, attached you will find quotes for three replacement vehicles for the Water Department. We have contacted the vendor, and they have agreed to honor the prices offered through the State of Michigan My Deal Extended Purchasing Program as solicited for a 2024 Ford 550 chassis with Rockport service van body, a Ford 550 chassis with a rugby stake platform, and a Ford 750 chassis with a six-to-eight-yard dump box. In accordance with township purchasing and bid policies, the recommended motion is to award the vehicle purchases to Gorno Ford for $82,745 for the 2024 Ford 550 chassis with a Rockport van body, $81,200 for the 2024 Ford 550 chassis with a rugby stake platform, and $139,875 for the 2025 Ford 750 chassis with a six-to-eight-yard dump box. These are budgeted purchases. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to ask. Sincerely, Charles Belmore, Assistant Superintendent of Water and Sewer.
I make a motion for approval.
Support.
Comments or questions?
Are we going to be able to get delivery on these relatively quickly?
Unfortunately, we'll get the order in, and we get it when we get it. As you can see from the previous budgets, we actually have a couple carryovers from two years ago that we're still waiting.
Right, all right.
But it holds this price, though.
But this will hold the price.
Okay.
That's what we want.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Item 10 is Request Approval for Out-of-State Conference.
Dear members of the board, Clinton Township GIS Specialist Magda DeFranco is requesting to attend the ESRI User Conference to be held July 15th to the 19th, 2024, in San Diego, California. The registration cost is $2,175, is complimentary with our annual maintenance subscription. The travel costs of $1,700 for hotel, airfare, and meals are a budgeted item under education and training. The 2024 ESRI UC will focus on the power of geospatial thinking. Geographic Information Systems, or GIS technology, brings together the science of geography with the modern capabilities of data management, analysis, visualization, integration, and collaboration. GIS specialists will have a chance to collaborate and learn in a dynamic environment by attending user presentations and interactive workshops, to meet one-on-one with ESRI subject matter experts, to explore the conference expo, to connect with other GIS users and experts, and to be inspired at the world's largest GIS conference. I am asking for your approval of this out-of-state conference travel request, respectfully submitted, Mary Benner, Director of Public Services.
I make a motion for approval.
Support.
Mr. Keys?
Thank you. I'm applauding because I just brought this up with Tyler Technologies when we talked about their service contract, that some of these trainings should be included in the purchase. And I'm just so happy to see that reference in the letter, and I know going forward, when we have these contracts, I'm going to try to bring that up, so happy to see that was already included in this contract. I am surprised that the travel costs are 1,700. Has that been reviewed? Because that, that's pretty low.
So she has been able to, but she's not going to stay at the hotel, that they actually, the conference is at, it's in San Diego, and the hotel cost is really high, so she found a hotel that's like three blocks away that she can walk to, trying to keep costs as low as possible, and so she's, you know, she's really doing her due diligence to be able to go and be able to acquire this information.
Okay. Yeah, that's just kind of, that shocked me a little bit. So yes, I'm very glad that we're having this type of training. This is an awesome service, we all know the benefits, and at the Conservation Committee level, it's been instrumental in trying to get buy-in from partners and just residents in the community. So I'm glad to see that it's paid for majority by the vendor.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Cress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes, motion passes.
Thank you. Item 11, Request for Bid Award for the Sanitary Sewer CCTV and Cleaning.
Dear board members, on March 26, 2024, the Charter Township of Clinton's Clerk's Office received a total of five bids and processed a total of four bids for the above referenced project. One bid was rejected since it did not include the first three pages of the bid form and did not acknowledge receipt of addendum number one. Our office checked the tabulation of the bid submitted, and the low bidder is Rogue Industrial Services of Bloomfield Hills, Michigan, in the bid total amount of $496,380. A copy of the final bid tabulations is attached. The project consists of the closed-circuit televising, or CCTV, and cleaning of 201,800 lineal feet of eight-inch by 48-inch sanitary sewers in the northerly half of Clinton Township. These sewers are the remaining locations that need to be evaluated in Clinton Township's 10-year evaluation plan and sanitary sewer assessment management plan. As a condition of the bid requirements, prospective bidders were required to be pre-qualified for the sanitary sewer cleaning and televising. Rogue Industrial Services provided the necessary pre-qualification information to be considered for bid award. The bid results were reviewed with the Director of Public Services and Township Personnel. Based upon the bid submitted and conditions noted above, we recommend that the 2024 sanitary sewer CCTV and cleaning project be awarded to Rogue Industrial Services located at 1250 Fox Chase Road, Bloomfield, Michigan, I'm sorry, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan, 48301, in the amount of $496,380. Sincerely, Scott Chabot, Project Manager with AEW.
I make a motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes, sir.
Didn't we just do this? My first meeting, we were talking about cameras and sewers and an additional 27,000 for some section that was rarely accessible. Am I recalling that correctly?
So for the last 10 years, actually, a little bit longer than 10 years, we've been doing projects, this, this type of project. So I believe that one that you approved was, and Scott Chabot's here, I believe that was on the last contract, correct? So that would have been the previous contract. This is an extension, this is not an extension, this is a new contract, and it's actually the last one of this 10-year program, so we can say that we've seen every sewer pipe underground.
So we're starting over, or this is a different part of the grid?
This is a different section. So we have approximately 365 miles of sanitary sewer underground, and you can see in this, we're doing 201,800 lineal feet, so this is just a portion. What I did was we took the sewer and divided into 10 different groups, basically, and so that, so this is the last of those 10 groups.
Isn't it true we have our own cameras?
Yes, but we can't do all these, all these size pipes, and we can't, we've, we just don't have the staff to be able to do all this work.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Westerman?
George Westerman, 42999 Little Road. The reason I, I didn't know this was on the agenda, but I, just before I came here, here, I paid my water bill online, so I have a question about this. I know that in the latter part of two thousand and nine, we had, uh, we began a program where we were cleaning the, uh, sanitary sewers within Clinton Township. We were doing it in-house within the, uh, the personnel that we had at the time, and that continued until I retired until two thousand and eleven. I don't know what, what occurred after that, why that, you know, isn't the case anymore. But my question is, is there a possibility that, that department personnel could be used in-house, uh, to continue to do some of this, to, to offset some of the cost? I mean, obviously, whatever we have to pay out to a contractor is translated and has to be, or is recovered, uh, in, in, increased cost to the residents. And so my question, is there a possibility that, that, uh, some of these three hundred-plus miles could, could still be cleaned, some of the smaller lines or whatever, by township personnel? Uh, Mr. Cannon?
Mrs. Bednar will answer that.
So, Mr. Cannon, we actually still do TV and clean some of the lines, um, particularly restaurant lines, um, where we have a lot of problems with grease and so forth. So this is above and beyond that. This is an, you know, this is us seeing some pipes that we've maybe never seen that may or may not have problems, and that's why we want to go see it. So we started this program actually as part of the ACO to look at all of the pipes now that we've taken care of the problems in the south end with our sewer, uh, overflows. Um, we said, okay, you know what? One of the problems we had was we hadn't seen those pipes, so we need to, you know, be, do our due diligence and see all the pipes. So this is above and beyond that, but we actually do still do our own TV and cleaning, and our staff do those routine maintenance ones on a, you know, still on a regular basis.
Well, and I, and I do applaud, uh, Mr. Cannon through you to Ms. Bednar. I do applaud the efforts that the department has made in, in replacing of lines and, and in the, uh, the overall maintenance. It's just, again, if there's a way that we could somehow, uh, use in-house personnel to offset these costs, that directly, uh, relates to a reduction overall to the residents in Clinton Township.
Oh, I agree.
All right. Thank you.
We're good. We have a motion and a support on the floor? Mr. Gilliam?
Just if I may, so, you know, we threw out the acronym ACL, but I'm not sure that everybody knows ACL. So, an ACO is the Administrative Consent Order with the DEQ. Many years ago, when we had overflow pumps, um, that was discharging sewage, um, we were placed under that by the Department of Environmental Quality. And the idea here is, is to see the condition of those pipes so that we can figure out if there's cracks, if there's infiltration into the system, to keep, uh, water from infiltrating those pipes because, one, it saves us money, two, it keeps water out of the system, and three, um, it, uh, makes sure that, um, we have enough capacity to not have to have overflow pumps.
So just to be clear, the, this project is not in that area. This is, this is the remainder of the sewer pipes in the township, particularly the north, which is the newer pipes. Um, but again, we hadn't seen them. Um, it's a, normal practices try that, you try to see them every ten years or so, um, because you want to catch it. If you can be preventative, um, and maybe line a pipe and set a wait for a failure, it's always better, um, it's cheaper, and it's also caused less, uh, you know, problems and interruption to service to our residents.
So, but it also then does save us money because that sewage is metered, right? We pay on the volume.
Correct.
So if we keep water out of the system, then we save money and helps, help, uh, keep water bills, uh, less.
Correct.
Okay.
Further comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Matuzak.
Yes.
Trustee Keys.
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon.
Yes.
Trustee Kress.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item twelve, budget approval for emergency sanitary sewer manhole replacement on Garfield Road. And if you've been down Garfield over the last several days, you know exactly where it's at.
So moved.
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Patton. Uh, Mrs. Bednar, could you briefly let our community know in case they haven't been on Garfield, what's going on?
So we have an emergency repair on a manhole. Is, is my microphone working?
It doesn't sound like, others are, but I don't know.
Testing. One, two. Okay. That's weird. I could, I'm like, I hear myself, but I'm not hearing the, anyway, we have an emergency manhole repair on Garfield Road. It is just south of Clinton River Road, actually just south of the bridge. Uh, the, and we have had to close two of the, uh, southbound, or, yes, excuse me, southbound lanes down, um, to make this repair. Currently, there is, um, the southbound lanes is being diverted to the center lane. So we have one lane going southbound, and we have two lanes going northbound. That repair, um, they've actually started removing, uh, concrete and looking at that repair today. Tomorrow, we're going to be setting up what we call bypass pumping, and then we will be able to get a better feel of what is exactly going on and how to repair it. We believe we need to replace the manhole. It's one of the oldest manholes in the, uh, in the community. Um, so we're going to be replacing that with a precast, uh, manhole, um, and then moving forward with that. We're anticipating the repair to take three to four weeks at this time, but I will have a better idea by the end of the week because we'll have it opened up and we'll be able to see how much of damage has been caused under the road.
Thank you. What would, what would occur had you not started this project and completed, of course?
Unfortunately, we could have had a collapse of the road, so, um, for safety reasons, that's why the two lanes are closed.
Mr. Kress?
The failure, is it, is it a precast structure?
The, the, the existing structure is actually a brick structure.
Okay.
An old, very old brick structure.
Mr. Cannon?
I just want to say thank you to, uh, Clerk Meltzer, who, um, who drives this area, and she noticed that dip in the road and brought it forward. So I just really want to say thank you for that, so.
I, I think she was driving, she was driving, you were driving down Garfield and spilled your coffee because you hit that hole. So it's, it's good that it was caught. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Cannon, if I can, um, add, the Department of Roads has been a great partner in this and has been working with us within, as well as Macomb County Public Works Office, um, because as we know, the, the interceptor goes down Garfield Road, or one of the interceptors go down. So everyone pulled in and looked at their own lines, and we all were able to, uh, assess what was going on and move in a very timely fashion. So I do want to thank both of those county agencies for helping us.
And if I could thank Scott Chabot also for responding so quickly, I really appreciated that as well. He took my calls right away and, um, explained how the road felt like it was getting worse, degrading every day. It was markedly different, and I, so I really appreciated that. Isn't he here? I thought he was here. Oh, there he is. So thank you, Scott. You're very attentive, and you do a great job for the township.
Good job all around, all the departments.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Keys.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Matuzak.
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon.
Yes.
Trustee Kress.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam.
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item thirteen, introduction of amended sidewalk ordinance.
Dear Honorable Board of Trustees, on April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, the Budget Ways and Means Committee met and discussed an amendment to the sidewalk ordinance proposed by the Township Attorney in consultation with the Director of Public Services, Mary Bednar. According to Mr. Dolan and Ms. Mcgrale, the Township does not have the authority to mandate the creation of an easement for the installation of a sidewalk, but rather must negotiate the issue. The proposed changes to the sidewalk ordinance are in response to this reality. As a result, the committee voted unanimously to recommend the board introduce with the intent to adopt the sidewalk ordinance amendment at the next regularly scheduled meeting commencing on the April twenty-ninth meeting. Please contact Public Services Director, Mary Bednar, the Township Attorney, or me for further information or questions concerning this recommendation. Respectfully, Paul Gilliam, Treasurer and Chair of Budget Ways and Means Committee.
Thank you. Are there any cameras or questions?
Mr. Cannon?
Yeah.
Before you. Mr. Dolan?
Very, very briefly, actually, it, it was myself that drafted the revision and so forth. But this really emanates from a Sixth Circuit decision by the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals in, uh, Cincinnati involving, which we're part of, that's our circuit, uh, involving the city of Nashville. And so essentially, the court had held that you can't by ordinance require some sort of transfer of an easement for something like a sidewalk as a condition before you would grant a building permit or a occupancy permit.
Mr. Kress?
Um, I'm concerned because this comes from the Budget Ways and Means Committee, and this is almost a quarter inch thick, so I'd imagine there's some sort of presentation that went along with this that I was not, um, I did not witness, did not hear. Um, again, I, I, I don't see the, the use of the need for, uh, four, four of us sitting up here, being in a room and making decisions, and then coming in this room and already having the majority of the vote moving forward. It alienates myself and any other board member that's not in attendance at Budget Ways and Means. I just want to put that on the record that I don't think that, that's a, uh, it's a travesty, is what I think.
You, just for the public and the board is clear on this, um, and I know, because you're new, um, Trustee Kress, you are welcome to come to the Budget Ways and Means meetings.
Are they televised?
And they're, no, they're not televised. No committees' meetings are televised. And the, and the township is, it's, it's open, it's a public meeting, so, um.
And what time is it?
Uh, nine-thirty, right?
AM?
Nine-thirty, yeah. Yep, nine-thirty AM, once every month. And it's been that way for, I've been here twelve years as the clerk, so it's been there, that way, that long. And, um, not that it couldn't change if somebody has a recommendation to make it a different time, but I don't know that that would be helpful to the public that's relied upon that knowledge for so many years. But, um, it is open, and definitely, we encourage the public to participate in the Budget Ways and Means Committee meeting.
Thank you. Mrs. Patton?
Uh, to Mr. Trustee Kress's point, it's okay to come to the meeting, but only so many people hold that vote, correct?
Correct.
So how many people actually hold the vote?
Five.
For the voting members.
It's four voting members.
Five.
Four of them, right here.
So it's.
One, two, three, four.
That goes to what his point was. It's still four voting members that come out of there and say, we voted on this, and here it is, so let's vote on it as a board, so.
Make a recommendation.
A recommendation, or whatever.
Yeah, it's a recommendation. It doesn't, yeah, it's just a recommendation based on what's presented in the meeting.
Mr. Gilliam?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I can appreciate the concerns, um, but, you know, this is oftentimes a very deliberative process. The answers aren't always clear, and sometimes it takes a lot of staff input. As you can see, we don't have all of the staff here. We rely on directors, we rely on department heads, who actually have to go out and do the work, uh, the policies that we create. So this is an opportunity for them to be in the room to advise us. Then we make a recommendation. That is all it is. Ultimate decision-making authority is here at the township board level. And so these meetings might last until, you know, two o'clock in the morning if we didn't have a Budget Ways and Means Committee to, you know, get that staff input, to actually do a deliberative process, to actually debate these issues and put them together in a recommendation that we think is, um, probably best suited to be here. Sort of like the committee work, then the final vote. And it's a process that's worked in pretty much every legislative body that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
And if I could just add, as a trustee, um, especially when I came in on, as a new trustee, I know Clerk Meltzer had said it's, you know, been like this for a long time. In fact, when I came on, these were not public meetings.
They were not.
These were meetings that were held in the conference room, and the public really, unless invited to present on an item, really was not aware of the agenda or what was being discussed. It was internal. Um, we worked really hard, I think, on this board to try to open that up, because as a new trustee, I found every idea I had got sent to a committee where really there wasn't this public input or opportunity for me to even attend, because as a, when it wasn't posted, you couldn't have more than, you know, the three full-time electeds in there. A fourth person would violate the Open Meetings Act. So, under Treasurer Gilliam's leadership, as the Chair of Budget Ways and Means, and this board setting it as a priority, we've opened those meetings up, they're now public. It still, I think, gives a chance for the department heads and even members of the public to talk about and debate the issue. But I hope that you don't look at it as an opportunity or as a, um, a stop point. Stop point is this board. We should ask questions here, you should feel free to share the questions that are even brought up at Budget Ways and Means, you know, in this room, because I think it's important that we deliberate. Um, and so I do, I do think that what we have today for Budget Ways and Means is a good process, and what I had when I first got elected, I was not a fan of, and I appreciate this board going through the transition. And just on a special note, I really appreciate when I send something to Budget Ways and Means, now, the, you know, the flexibility of being able to attend virtually when possible. I think that's really beneficial for trustees that have full-time jobs, to be able to participate in that deliberative process. It's not always available, but if you, you know, work with staff, it, you know, it has been available, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Kress?
Well, as I've said before, I maintain that, that things of importance should be discussed in front of the public, in front of the TV cameras. And, uh, as you can see today, I was a victim of it. I want to talk about the chipping service, and now it's been banished into a room down the hallway, and it's going to be talked about by four people. And if the four people make a decision they don't want it, um, then it's, it's.
Comes back to this board.
With the recommendation of four members that sit here.
Right.
Which, there's seven of us, you do the math, it's, if it comes out of Budget Ways with a yes or a no, and the same person sit on this board, that's my only concern.
The vote at the, at the budget.
Is not guaranteed.
That's exactly right.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. Puts me in a disadvantage, though.
You'll be able, you'll have the opportunity to present.
Someday.
At the committee.
And if I can get residents to take off work and be there, what time? Nine fifteen AM?
Nine-thirty.
Ten AM?
Nine-thirty.
Okay, I'll see what I can do.
Yes, sir.
Yes, and I also, you know, with this coming from the Budget Ways and Means Committee, people have to realize there's actually five voting members on Budget Ways and Means, and there's a four that are on the board, but we also have the deputy supervisor who doesn't even live in Clinton Township. And there again, as we all know, we have, there again, this motion tonight was, uh, sent by a unanimous vote, which means that there were already four voting members that are saying yes. And so the three members that are sitting up here are literally, they can vote no, but they're going to be outvoted. And it's just like some others, you know, I mean, we've got the chipper service sent back to some future date, not even, no one the, but it's going to cancel in a couple weeks. And this board, there again, Mr. Gilliam is the Chairman of the Budget Ways and Means, Clerk Meltzer, Trustee Matuzak, Supervisor Cannon, and Deputy Supervisor O'Leary, who lives in Washington Township. Now, I think we should be actually devote, you know, these are the people that can vote at that meeting. And I believe very clearly that, uh, the decisions are made before they get here, and then we can have members of that committee make a side thing to take something off the agenda and, and say, no, the Budget Ways and Means are going to do this. But they don't even have a date set up. The, the residents know the chipping service is going away in about two weeks. And the Budget Ways and Means at some future date, not in, they already said not in May, So at some future date it's going to come and yous don't even want, I know it's going to be well-publicized who voted, did not even allow it on the agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and support on the floor?
Yeah.
Mr. Cannon?
Mr. Cannon, point of order, we're on the item on the.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalk.
I know.
Issue. And so this is a public hearing, actually, because.
This, this is an introduction.
Yes, yes, this is the introduction of an ordinance change, which needs to be approved at the next board meeting. So all the board members have the opportunity to, one, bring their issues to Budget Ways and Means, they have the opportunity to work with directors to come up with a plan, and they have the opportunity to then debate it over a series of weeks.
Correct.
So this is not about that agenda item, it's about sidewalks.
Correct.
Mr. Cannon? About sidewalks.
Thank you.
The only change being made in the sidewalk ordinance is that in the past, we have said to a developer who doesn't really have a space, we had an industrial development, that there was no need for a sidewalk. And we said to them, before we approve your building permit, we're going to make you build a sidewalk somewhere else. What the court has said is we can't make you do that. We can, what the side, what the court said is we can negotiate with you about that. That's the only change being made in the sidewalk ordinance, that instead of mandating somebody has to, I forget, the legalese, do an easement of some kind. And instead of mandating they build us a sidewalk somewhere, we now have to ask them and negotiate with them. That's the only change being made in this ordinance. This is not a big deal. It gives, in fact, the residents more, although it's usually not residents we're negotiating with about sidewalks, gives them more ability to negotiate.
Mr. Cannon, just so we're clear on what the case decision was and the change in the ordinance, what it is doing is it's eliminating our ability to demand that the property right for the sidewalk, the easement, be given to us. We can negotiate for that, we must negotiate for that, but the actual cost of the construction of the sidewalk would still remain with the property owner.
Really, there's no change. I think you explained it very well.
There is.
Sir, you have the floor.
Well, there is a change. We now are going to negotiate with people over these things. And that's a fine thing. I'm happy to negotiate with people over these things. I would say that the other thing about Budget Ways and Means is that many times we're sitting there discussing concepts and we're discussing this word or that word. It's to make a recommendation to this. It's not, if we sat here discussing words over ordinances, oh my God, we'd be here until 3:00 a.m. We have plenty of time to discuss anything that comes before here, but I would prefer not to be discussing individual words in ordinances over and over again. Budget Ways and Means, we passed a motion last time saying, take something to Budget Ways and Means, come with proposal. We'll just, everyone can discuss it and make a recommendation and then we can discuss it again here. I don't see what the problem is.
Thank you. Sir?
Dana Dugger, 378-52 suburban in the beautiful east-central portion of our township. The word that you're bandering back and forth here on words, reading this, I'm not the attorney, but come on screen, flip around. The word negotiate comes up and it seems to be the way that this is written, that if the property owner tells you no, that seems to be the end. Please elaborate on it, explain that if you wish to put a, negotiate for a area for a sidewalk and the property owner says, nope, ain't doing it, then where does it go? That's just, as a layman, that's my question. Thank you so much.
Mr. Dolan?
Okay, there are a couple circumstances where this might arise, but to just address the overall arching concern, what occurs is this, if a sidewalk is needed, then the actual property right, the easement, has to be negotiated typically with some compensation paid. If that fails, there still is the ability of the township to utilize the powers of condemnation to acquire that, where again, compensation would be paid. So those are circumstances where that might arise. And I'm raising this last point because we do have a number of these existing in the township. In many instances, we've allowed property owners, based on the lack of, at the time that they are building sidewalks nearby, to execute covenants. And when those covenants are executed, the township retains the right later on to demand that the sidewalk go in and if an easement is needed, that it be provided. In those situations, because we're giving a benefit to the property owner through the covenant, delaying the installation, we would have the legal right to require the conveyance and the sidewalk. So those are three examples.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Cannon. When did this go in, when did this take place? Or when does it go into effect?
Mr. Dolan?
It will be effective if the board obviously approves tonight. We will bring it back two weeks from now at the next meeting for adoption. And then upon adoption and publication, it's effective.
Okay, but the Supreme Court ruling, they're saying that basically we have to do this, so when did that go into effect?
It was a decision of the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, not the Supreme Court. And that, that happened, I don't have it right in front of me, but it was relatively recently, within about the last year or 18 months. I don't have it right in front of me.
Okay.
If you want, I can get you a copy of the opinion if you ask me, if you want to look at it.
Mr. Cannon, I make a motion to introduce and publish.
Is there a second?
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Patton. Roll call, please.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Matuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Trustee Keys, I'm sorry. I said trustee, did you say yes?
No. Yes.
I was going to say, I tried to run. Now Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
No.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item 14, request approval to change legal service contracts.
Esteemed Board, it has become apparent that it is time for a change in our general counsel service provider. This conclusion is based on a number of factors, including number one, Mr. Dolan continues to reside in Florida, making communication problematic. Number two, Mr. Dolan is paid over $900 per day plus added fees, seven days per week, regardless of whether he works for us or not. That exorbitant rate covers only general counsel work, not prosecution, employment matters, litigation, or tax tribunal efforts. Number three, there have been concerns about the success of the arrangement and access from the administration. Number four, the depth of the firm is lower than that which is available from other firms. In addition to those concerns, I am deeply disturbed that Mr. Dolan wrote a lengthy declaration and submitted to the defense attorney of former trustee and convicted criminal Dean Reynolds. Mr. Dolan provided Reynolds attorney the lengthy document in order to allow the defense attorney to argue before the federal judge overseeing the Dean Reynolds corruption trial that Mr. Reynolds' state sentence should be set aside. In it, Mr. Dolan represented himself as the township attorney and made spurious arguments on Mr. Reynolds' behalf, in my view. The township was never informed of this chosen conflict or provided a copy of the document by Mr. Dolan. We were made aware of this intent to do this via a complaint from an employee who stated that she and a consultant were contacted by Mr. Dolan regarding making statements to the defense attorney. This was all done toward the end of 2022 without board knowledge. Given that Mr. Reynolds harmed the residents of this community and rocked the credibility of the board and government of Clinton Township, it is my belief that this action by Mr. Dolan renders him unfit to continue to serve as the legal counsel for the very board and community that Mr. Reynolds harmed. I recommend the following. Number one, provide notice to Dolan to commence the transition period. Number two, require Dolan to turn over all electric and hard copy files to the township clerk. Number three, authorize the supervisor to sign the attached engagement agreement with the Kelly firm effective immediately for general counsel services only, not inclusive of prosecution, employment matters, or tax dispute matters unless otherwise requested. This recommendation is not made lightly. We had a very comprehensive process in 2022 in which O'Reilly, Rancilio, and the Kelly firm were finalists. Mr. Gilliam then asked that we allow Mr. Dolan to interview as a finalist since he was the incumbent attorney, even though no other committee member recommended Dolan. In the end, O'Reilly was recommended unanimously by the committee with Kelly as the runner-up. The committee members were Supervisor Cannon, Treasurer Gilliam, Clerk Meltzer, Finance Director Mary Heine, Human Resources Director William Smith, and Deputy Supervisor Dan O'Leary. Between the time of the committee recommendation and board action, there were private meetings between Mr. Dolan, Ms. McGrath, and Mr. Gilliam without knowledge of other committee members. Mr. Gilliam then switched his vote to the surprise of the entire committee. The collusion between Mr. Dolan and Ms. McGrath was a breach of the non-collusion agreement made in writing as part of the bid process. The hijacking of the process resulted in a higher cost, lower impact firm being selected to the detriment of taxpayers. Mr. Keys then submitted for approval a contract for Dolan, which was not even the contract Mr. Dolan submitted with his bid. The taxpayers have endured under this arrangement for two years. Given the disturbing history and our concerns about costs and conflicts, we have refreshed bids from the lower-priced firms from the 2022 process, the O'Reilly, Kelly, and Foster firms. Giammarco declined to bid because our board meetings are on the evenings, that they do not have an attorney available. The Kelly firm is being recommended because they are, number one, highly qualified, number two, the best financial value, number three, highly recommended by our peers who are clients, number four, a firm with greater bench strength than our existing firm, number five, a firm that is growing yet not so large that we wouldn't be a top priority, number six, it's located in the state of Michigan. I respectfully request that the board approve these recommendations. Sincerely, Robert J. Cannon, Supervisor.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Mr. Kress?
I make a motion to table this agenda item until I'm given the opportunity to meet with this Kelly law firm or any other trustee that has concerns about changing our legal services.
Is there a second?
I'll support a motion to table.
Table or postpone?
Table.
Table has to be brought back tonight.
No.
No, it doesn't.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Yes, motion to table takes the matter off the agenda and then a motion to bring it back is required. Postpone is where you take it to a specific date.
I will accept that as accurate. Then I will call tomorrow to the MTA's attorney and tell them they were incorrect, the information they gave me. A motion to table is on the floor. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cannon, are there any before the motion?
Well, if we table it.
What is the discussion on?
Discussion on tabling?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I don't know if a motion to table is debatable. That's, that would be.
I don't think it is.
I don't know.
It is, it is not.
So the answer is?
According to Robert's Rules of Order, if it's strictly a motion to table.
It's not, then is that a two-step?
I'm sorry. Our attorney is telling us we cannot debate a motion to table. So we have a motion. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, our trustee Kress?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Trustee Matuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
No.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Motion passes.
Okay. Item 15 has been deleted. Has been removed. Item 16, motion to authorize adding claims to current litigation against PBMs.
Mr. Cannon, our attorney would speak to this issue.
Okay.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes, we only recently received information on this and basically, there are currently pending two litigation forums for litigating what are called PBMs, which are Pharmaceutical Benefit Management Company, companies. And essentially, what this involves is drugs that, for the most part, are used to treat insulin and the pricing of those drugs. These PBMs are companies that work to try to lower allegedly prescription prices in plans typically which have quite a number of members. And the assertion is that there's been, in some respects, the opposite, some improper contact between the insulin manufacturers and the PBMs and the pricing benefits that are supposed to be passed on to the members of the, the actual customers of the insurance or recipients of the healthcare services are not receiving it and they feel they have enough evidence so that they can bring forward these claims. One of the cases is in the state of New Jersey in federal court. And then also, the same attorneys who are working on the opioid case requested in that forum that we also bring forward claims. These would involve, again, working on a, on a, a negotiated price that the court would oversee in terms of attorney fees. And we would ultimately, if successful, receive at some point in the litigation, a resolution. And then, just like in the opioid cases, there would have to be determinations made as to the actual receipt for each of the pool of plaintiff, the individual plaintiffs who make up the pool of plaintiffs. My recommendation is that we go ahead and approve tonight with respect to the opioid arrangement in the one Cleveland lawsuit venue that we're in now on the opioids. Mr. Sickles, our attorney locally who's worked on that, did provide us correspondence on that. And I can briefly read this, which spells out what he is suggesting that we do. He says, "The email string you included in this email addresses litigation claiming unlawful price fixing between PBMs, including Express Scripps and the big three manufacturers of insulin, Novo, Nordsec, Eli Lilly, and Sanofi. Recent email communications Clinton Township received from our National Opioid Council, which I have seen, address bringing certain PBMs into the existing opioid MDL litigation as named defendants." That's our current opioid lawsuit. I highly recommend that Clinton Township won't join both litigations. To join the latter, all that Dan needs to do is respond to the email according to the instructions provided. To join the former, which is the new one now in, in New Jersey, the Federal District Court for the District of New Jersey, Clinton will need to pass a resolution and sign on authority to represent document. Clinton would like to proceed or obtain more information. Lisa and I, meaning Lisa Asser, is one of his attorneys, can send the documents and if interested, we can attend a board meeting or make a presentation. National counsel in this litigation includes some but not all of the firms that represent Clinton Township in the opioid litigation. So tonight, what we're asking is, in the current opioid litigation, that we go ahead and approve that, we can take action at a later date, once we get the resolution and other documents from Mr. Sickles, so we actually have a chance to see what's being presented as far as a proposed arrangement with the Mr. Sickles and his firm and national counsel in that area.
Mr. Cannon? Is this the situation that was the same as the opioid cases? The earlier you get in, the more likely you are to receive a bigger piece of the pie?
Well, I think, you know, in that particular litigation, a lot of it just came down to, at the attorney general level, how the negotiated percentages worked out on the primary claim. And then, as you know, we did file on the supplemental claim and got a substantial sum on the supplemental claim.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a good idea. I've been reading about this potential lawsuit in the national publications. These, these conglomerates that say they're there to, to reduce drug costs, prescription costs for individuals seem in reality to be driving up those costs. And I think if we can take them on, that would be great. I would be in favor of that.
Thank you. The floor is open for a motion.
So moved.
And supported by?
I support.
Roll call?
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Matuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item 17, a resolution to recognize the past Sunday, April 28th, as Worker Memorial Day in the state of Michigan and the Charter Township of Clinton.
So moved.
Support. Madam Clerk, if you wouldn't mind just maybe reading the now therefore be it resolved, not the entire resolution?
Which one? The resolved, sorry?
Yeah, the very end, now therefore be it resolved.
And also, just that you know, I think last year was the first year we introduced this. This is on, we're doing this on an annual basis. Now therefore be it resolved by the Charter Township of Clinton that the members of this township board recognize this past Sunday, April 28th, 2024, as Worker Memorial Day in the state of Michigan and Charter Township of Clinton. We join communities and work sites across the world and our state to honor friends, family members, and colleagues who have been killed or injured on the job and honor the contributions of Michigan's workforce and call for increased workplace safety.
Thank you.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Just one comment. I was driving down Garfield today with our workers, working in the almost sinkhole, and there was a car going so fast. Please, people, slow down in construction zones. The folks who are working on the side of the road and in the road are our people, they're our neighbors. Please, slow down. People are killed regularly working on public works projects and road projects, and we can do better.
Thank you. I agree. It's, it's a big safety issue. What I should also explain, and I asked Mrs. Bettner to say a little bit about it, is if we didn't do these projects, the cost and the repercussions would be much higher. So it's good that we catch them in time, if you will, so we don't have additional sinkholes throughout the community and we get them repaired. It's inconvenient, there's no question about. If you're driving down Garfield right now, or 15 Mile, very inconvenient. But in the end, it'll be done. It'll be done properly and we won't have big issues like the sinkhole that we had several years ago on 15 Mile. With that.
We have a motion and a second?
Roll call, please.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Trustee Matuzak?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. We have five public comments. The first is Mr. Dolan.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jack Dolan and I have two residences. I reside at 755 South Woodward in Birmingham, Michigan. And I also have a residence in Florida at 19109 Aquashore Lane in Fort Myers, Florida. I've been in Florida since 2018, roughly. I'm there because I have a son who's the absolute light of my life, who suffers from some medical conditions that make it difficult for him to be comfortable in winter conditions in Michigan. I've been there since 2018 and I faithfully attempted to try to represent the township since then. A number of statements have been made tonight that are, in my opinion, to be as fair as I can, completely and totally inaccurate. I'm prepared to go over with anyone interested in detail the reason that those statements are inaccurate. Mr. Cannon has failed to accurately even set forth what our arrangement is. I don't get paid on all litigation. I only get paid on litigation that involves bodily injury claims. An example of that is a case that I handled recent.
An example of that is a case that I handled recently, the opioid litigation case. It culminated back in January with us receiving a fairly large award, $1.4 million. Leading up to that, I had encouraged and wanted us to settle, or not settle, but to actually bring the claim. There was resistance on that. And you may recall, at the January 8th meeting, Mr. O'Leary stated, "Don't fire Dolan. He's the one who pushed us to go ahead and file the claim." I filed that claim. That was under my retainer. We received $1.4 million gross. That was, I don't get any extra compensation for that because I agreed to that retainer, and I worked hard under that retainer and obtained, along with certainly a lot of work by Mr. O'Leary too, that result. And that's just an example of the fact that some of the litigation is not compensated beyond what my, what that fee is. I'd like to quickly note also that my annual retainer amount adds up to $334,800. In 2022, Cannon Township spent $810,000. In 2023, they spent $715,000 on attorney fees. 2024, they actually budgeted $583,000.
Your time is up. Mr. Dolan, your time is up.
Oh, okay. I will say this, anybody who wants additional information from me, I'm more than happy to speak to, if there are any members of the press or others.
Mr. Sam Bushell?
Sam Bushell, 1-8546 Wayland Drive. At the press conference held April 26th, 2024, it was cited by Mr. Barry Miller, the head of the Building Department, that Fourth Amendment provisions protected the commercial property's privacy, with Supervisor Cannon and even Macomb County Prosecutor and several other officials in agreement that they cannot violate the constitutional rights of private property. As Supervisor Cannon noted, most of the board of the trustees were in attendance, along with our police chief, Karinji. Understanding the Fourth Amendment rights for private property, I call at once for the board to inform Township assessor James Elrod that he ceases at once the practice of entering private property without permission. As Township Attorney Dolan has noted, the assessing department must follow the Department of Treasury's Bulletin Number Two of 2014. This bulletin is clear that the assessing officers, and this is a quote, "Assessing officers must follow statutory requirements," which would include the Constitution, obviously, which includes the, Mr. Elrod even has this bulletin on the assessing department's website, so he is aware of it. It also notes, "The first step," and this is a quote, "the first step in an inspection program is to ensure that all real property owners, both residents and business owners, are made aware that an inspection record or card review will be conducted in their area. Assessors should provide a venue to explain the inspection program and allow property owners to ask questions and receive accurate information. The State Tax Commission suggests that the local units send a letter of introduction to the owners of the property selected for inspection no less than 14 days prior to the start of the inspection. Of course, you all received the answer to my FOIA request asking to inspect the letter and the mailing costs for 2023 and 2024, noting that no letter mailing took place, ever. What quid pro quo causes you to honor the commercial property's constitutional rights but violates your electors' constitutional rights? Please order the assessor Elrod to discontinue violating our constitutional rights tonight." Also, I'm going to reaffirm the fact that doing this once, shame on, again, the state said that, you know, he didn't do it maliciously. Well, with all of you now on tape knowing how this is violating our rights, I don't think he'll get away with it again, and I'm very good at filing the complaint. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Westerman?
The first one regarding the township attorney. I would have thought that we'd be able to make some sort of comment regarding this, even though it was a motion to table. But while you're considering this motion, and when you meet on it again, I'd like to make you aware of a couple of things. When I retired in 2011, Dolan's office was receiving about $30,000 a month. I think that's what his rate was. It's still the same today. That hasn't changed. That rate was approved by the board some five or six years, or three or four years before that. So for over 15 years, maybe 16 years, the rate has remained the same. You can check that fact. The services that were provided before Mr. Dolan ran out of time, where he began to talk about the other issues related to increased fees, I talked about this the last time this was brought forward. Mr. Cannon, this is the fourth time that I'm aware of that you've brought forward a motion to try to fire Jack Dolan. You've done it twice since I retired, and I remember you going at it real bad with, with Mr. Sauerby while I was working here. It's time to let that go. One of the things that you cited in your letter was Dean Reynolds. Yes, Dean Reynolds harmed the township. And can I say this? Dean Reynolds harmed himself. He harmed his family. He destroyed his marriage. He destroyed the relationship with his children. And yet, the compassion of the township attorney came forward to try to ease some of that pain. How long should we be punished for our sins? For almost 20 years, I ran a 12-step program in my church, and I want to say this, I'm about second chances. I believe that they're right. I knew Mr. Reynolds when he was here. I'm sorry for the things that he did, and it was very upsetting for the things that he did. But the fact that the compassionate township attorney would attempt to try to ease some of that pain, remember, that's something that could possibly be a benefit to you at some point one day. Sidewalk mitigation processes that began when, when I was the superintendent have saved this township thousands of dollars in mitigation, in litigation, in payouts because of the programs that were initiated, formed, put into practice by Jack Dolan. There is something to be said for not having to go out for requests for bids, for proposals. I didn't hear anything about that. Ransilio came up the last time. What's the connection with Ransilio? Secondly, in 2002 or 2003, this is on the chipping thing for you guys to consider in Ways and Means, I sent two guys to the Concrete Institute, and they became certified. We took over the inspection duties for parking lot inspections. When I left my position seven years later, we had accumulated almost $3 million in inspection fees. I recently talked to the, I have 10 seconds. Who spoke to the recently retired inspector, and he assures me that those fees are still the same and coming in at the same amount. That money was to offset chipping. That's why it began. Thank you for your time.
We have Chris. Is it Kersh?
No, thank you.
Then we have Dana.
Mr. Cannon, just before, there is someone, I need to read a comment that's been submitted remotely, and then at that time, ask that person if they wish to speak, but we're not there just yet. Go ahead.
Do you want to take the remote first?
No, no, you go ahead.
Dana Duggar, again, you got my name, you got my address. I am very, very disappointed at the political maneuvering that occurred to deny residents the opportunity to speak to the board tonight about the chipper truck. That is political maneuvering at its lowest ebb. Speaking of the chipper truck, I asked a question the night that you voted to eliminate it, that if we were going to use the 20% that was brought forward as a reason for eliminating it, were we going to use that 20% to review all township programs and eliminate any that didn't meet the 20%? I still await an answer. I have put that on hard copy to you, Mr. Chair. I've also put on hard copy that it was alluded that the chipper service kept six employees busy all the time. If that is the fact, why we're inserting only 20% of our residents, why were they six to eight weeks behind? When we would make a phone call last year, myself and many other neighbors, the answer was always, "We only have two people working on that." If we only have two people, two and six, there's a four difference there, even where I got my math in a two-room schoolhouse. Something is amiss. And if it was keeping six people busy, and now, the published date is now May 13th, if those six people are all of a sudden going to be freed up from this chipping event, what are they going to be used for? We have excess people in the department now that we, that we were busy and now they're not? Deserves an answer. We deserve better from this board. I thank you very much, and please consider the service that is sorely needed in a township with mature trees. And again, the gift wrapping for GFL will not work in this township. Thank you.
Thank you. A motion to adjourn is in order?
No, Mr. Cannon, if I could read that remote, please. This is from First Sergeant McCoy, U.S. Army, to everyone. He says, "I just wanted, I just would like to provide more towards the work that is going on for our infrastructure. I'm a civil engineer in the area with a well-known firm, and people need to understand and be courteous of work zones, and we will also need to pass a road millage." And then, I'm letting him know he can speak for three minutes if he likes, but he said he might be putting the kids to bed, so it looks like he's putting the kids to bed, so he hasn't responded. So, okay.
Motion to adjourn is in order?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Patton. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Clerk Meltzer, yes. Trustee Metuzak?
Yes.
Trustee Keys?
Yes.
Supervisor Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Kress?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilliam?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.[1798.63]